Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. It is now 6:30. I ask that you please stand by with the invocation of Pastor Bob from Impact Christian Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our God and Father, we thank you for the privilege of being together tonight to conduct the affairs of this community. Fathers, we enter this Christmas season, our hearts are full of joy, but Lord, we know some were not. Father, we pray for them for whatever the situations, whether it's personal loss or the grief that they still bear because of loved ones. Father, we lift them up in prayer as now, because we know you are a God who heals and a God who cares. Father, we pray as well for the families of our community, that they'll be strengthened through this joyous season. Father, they'll feel the joy of what it's like to live in a community that cares. We pray for the caring of this community, the sharing, the things that take place, Father, as neighbors reach out to other neighbors. Father, that that joy might be seen and felt, and might bring honor to you as well as to others. So Father, now our prayer for the people assembled here to guide this community. God, I ask again for you to give them wisdom and knowledge and direction. The decisions that they make, that they will be in for the best of this community. We look forward, Father, just give them a vision of what else you want to do through this community to serve the people. Father, again, we just pause to say thank you for those who serve and protect. We hold them up before you as those who are worthy of our concern and care. We thank you for them, Father, and ask your protection, all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Let's move. The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call. Here.
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 Here. Six present, we have a quorum. Petition, communication, remonstrations, we have a letter from Luke Oil. Mrs. Shine.
December 5th, 2018. Request for temporary sign replacement. Dear Mrs. Shine, on behalf of Luke Oil Company, Luke Bills is requesting permission to place a temporary sign on the northwest corner of our parking lot for the site located at 721 West Lincoln Highway. The dimensions of the sign are six feet tall by 10 feet wide. It will be mounted on an 18-foot trailer to keep it secure. Temporary electric will be installed per code to illuminate it. Included is a rendering of the sign we plan on using. It is our intent to use this temporary price sign until our permanent affixed canopy prices are installed. They are scheduled to be installed on December 18th, and we will install by the end of that week. The temporary sign will then be removed at this time. If you have any questions or need additional information, please contact me at 707-303-598. Sincerely, Luke Bills, Dan Butzowitz, General Manager.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Spann, that we approve the request for permission of temporary sign. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. At this time, we have the swearing in of a new patrolman, Aaron J. Myers. Would you come forward, please? And for those that would like to take pictures, you may come as close as you want.
Ma'am, you gonna take pictures of him? Here. Bring your two kids up here. These don't get sworn in. You guys come up here. The guys.
Wow.
Okay. Alright. Stand back. Usually we have four or five kids square at the same time. Stand next to him. Where's your dad? You guys kiss a lot of you, your dad, in a place where... Where's your aunt? I swear I am. I have to meet. I, your name.
I, your father.
Solely swear, solemnly, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will marry your husband. Your character is just there in Indiana.
Constitution of the United States.
And then we'll fail. Partially, partially, possibly, try to remind you of these. You're the mayor of police officer.
I'm the mayor of police department.
How available? According to law. Ability to have the house. Not a way for the private people.
Standing.
Yes, sir.
Standing committees. Budget Finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck is absent. Anybody have anything for Councilman Minchuck? What did I do this?
Senator.
Oh, sorry, bud.
Hold on. I have a comment too.
Okay, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
We gotta back up a little bit.
Okay.
Consent agenda, council table register voucher approval for December 11th, along with the approval of town council meeting minutes from November 27th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all over again. Standing committees, Councilman Pettit, Budget Finance.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck, march.
Oh, yes. I had several calls even today regarding the leaf pickup. A lot of them were not picked up, but I did talk with Bruce, and he said they would be coming back out there. So I just wanted to verify that I did talk with Bruce about it.
They are out now.
Are they out right now?
Yep, they were in my subdivision today.
Oh, fuck. Right now. Yeah. They are out doing a march. We started every one on Monday, and we're working our way south, so.
Okay, very good.
Getting the streets and everything all cleaned up.
And I think the other thing we have to be concerned about is that if the weather comes, like they said it's supposed to come about three or four o'clock in the morning, then we may be where we are yesterday. We may not be able to get back out again for a while. They're talking more rain.
Yeah. The last thing I saw on the weather was it was more the northwest suburbs, northern part of Illinois than...
Let's hope that holds true.
Right, right.
Okay. Uh, Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
We haven't done.
I have. Council Public Works, I'd like to make a thank you for Public Works. On 65th Place, past week, a tree fell over into the street. There was enough room for a car to get in. I went over, checked the scene. I had Kevin called, and he brought in a bucket thing and pushed the tree out of the street. And the strange thing was, it was in a guy that owned the two doors. It was his house. So neighbors were very grateful. They were scared. The tree laying down, tree out. Basically, what about Public Works?
Anything else from Public Works? Okay. Uh, Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report tonight.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilwoman Barron.
No report.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Oh, no report at this time.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I'd like to thank Jan and everybody that participated in the Santa procession last Friday, the Police Department, Fire Department. Mr. President Hardaway came out, even though I'm not sure he got out of his car, because it was so cold.
I was there.
I didn't see you.
In the end and out, because I had another engagement.
Okay. He was.
I saw the tree light up, and then I had to go.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody that participated, Jan.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening.
Uh, Mr. President. Yes, sir. That's one of them.
I'm so sorry. No problem. Thank you. I have a motion to appropriate funds to purchase parcels of real estate related to the current Maryville Community Center project. I make a motion that the town council and town attorney are directed by this town council pursuant to IC 36-110.5, that they shall attend and execute all documents concerning the real estate closing on or before December 31st, 2018, relating to properties located at 6700 Broadway, Indiana, 6600 Washington Street, Maryville, Indiana, 6600 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana, and 6535 Madison Street, Maryville, Indiana. Additionally, the town manager and town attorney are directed by this town council to deliver funds for the purchase of the real estate in the overall amount of $660,000 to be divided equally into two closings. One occurring on or before December 31st, 2018, in the amount of $330,000, and the other closing taking place on or before June 28th, 2019, in the amount of $330,000 plus any and all closing costs. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve the signing of the documents for the purchase of the property for the rec center. Any discussion?
Mr. Svetinoff, is this all of the parcels, then, the 660 takes care of all the land we're buying from the property owner? Yes, Councilman Pettit, we've already closed on the two-acre parcel that was formerly owned by Tech Federal Credit Union. These are the remaining parcels that are owned by Tri-Rex, which will give us approximately 30 acres out of the old Y&amp;W property, which should be all the remaining land that's out there. Okay. We, and the reason why this has been a labor of love is because we're currently, right now, working with the owner to clear up some public utility easement issues, and we're diligently working toward that with hopefully a closing at the end of this year.
And that's another question, Joe, I was gonna ask you. You've got two dates here, December 31st and June 28th. Is that just, can you close on the other 330,000 before June 30th?
Yeah. Before June 30th, it's on or before. And that's the way it's phrased in the agreement. So we can close at any time the parties feel comfortable in closing. But we wanted to split it up for the impact to the town to go with a split price, so that we feel the impact in 2018 of 330.
After we get the Broadway tip draw?
Then after the impact for 2019.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Anything else on the partial rec? Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Barron.
I have no report, ma'am.
Real quick, we finished our drainage improvement project on the 6700 block of Massachusetts. We're also 20% complete with engineering for our Meadowdale Regional Basin project. I talked to the Lake County Surveyor, and they agreed through the Lake County Drainage Board to do drainage maintenance for Turkey Creek Federal 6 from 53rd Avenue to 61st Avenue. And our contractor has completed installation of all the infrastructure for the Windy Hill Court project. All they have left is some grading and some seat blanket out there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Elections Public Relations, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
Real quick, Mr. President, we had a redevelopment commission meeting before the council meeting tonight, and the only reason I bring that up is we authorized the claim for $655,000, which is our share of the 101st Avenue Bridge project that we will be working with NDOT beginning in the spring of next year to widen that to four lanes. And I noticed Karen's in the audience, so I wanted her to get that information. And again, thank you to Bruce and the guys, I think, at Butler Fairman and NDOT. I normally don't thank NDOT, but I will go on the record thanking NDOT for widening that bridge.
Utility Liaison, Councilman Spann. No report. Bandit Properties, we're finally pleased to announce that we will be getting the tax certificates for 56121824 Broadway. We've been working on that for a couple years now, and we're finally going to get the tax certificates, and then we'll be waiting on the deeds.
Yes, actually, Mr. President, we did acquire the tax sale certificates. We have perfected those certificates. We have, we will be receiving orders from the court that we can perfect into tax deeds themselves, and we will be acquiring six parcels that encompass 5612, 5618, and 5624.
What we're going to do once we acquire those deeds is we're going to consolidate that into one parcel, and then we're gonna put a sign out there and try to sell it hopefully.
Speaking of parcels, Mr. President, to Joe, driving down 73rd Avenue today, I noticed that there appears to be a new-for-sale sign, small, on the Carriage House property. And I don't know if that's legitimate or not. I know you've informed us that you hope to be securing things by January 9th on those parcels, but I didn't know if anybody else noticed the new-for-sale sign up there, Rich? I just drove by there this afternoon.
Well, I've noticed a for-sale sign out there for about a month, Councilman Pettit. But I would caution anybody looking into that property, that if you purchase it, buyer beware, because the town will be looking over that quite closely.
Okay. Okay. That concludes Committees' General Orders, Ordinance 18-31. And Orders of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amended Ordinance 17-32, and pay for employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana for calendar year 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-31. Any discussion? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-32, An Ordinance Amending Town Code Section 2.1 Entitled Fees for Copying of Public Records Established and Repeating All Town Code Sections and Ordinances or Parts thereof in Conflict Herewith.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Spann, that we approve Ordinance 18-22. Any discussion? 32. Roll call. Span. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-33, An Ordinance Vacating a Public Way in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, in All Matters Related There To.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion?
Mr. President, might I interject on this?
Yes.
This is a vacation of a public right-of-way involved in a development that we were working on, a amendment to a PUD. At this time, what I'm gonna suggest is that we do a motion to accompany or adopt this all-in-one reading, as this vacation of public right-of-way needs to be done as to get this project moving forward.
You want us to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-30, An Ordinance to Establish New Wages and Salaries for Employees of Town of Maryville, Indiana, and to Add Men Provisions in the Compensation and Benefits Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-30 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment on Ordinance 18-29. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-29? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-33, An Ordinance Vacating a Public Way in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, in All Matters Related There To.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-32, An Ordinance Amending Town Code Section 2.1 Entitled Fees for Copying of Public Records Established and Repeating All Town Code Sections and Ordinances or Parts thereof in Conflict Herewith.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Spann, that we approve Ordinance 18-22. Any discussion? 32. Roll call. Span. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Second reading ordinances. That concludes first reading. Second reading ordinance, Ordinance 18-29, An Ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, Fixing the Parks, None Reverting Program Fees for the Year 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, thank you, that we approve of second reading ordinance, 18-29. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment on Ordinance 18-29. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-29? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-33, An Ordinance Vacating a Public Way in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, in All Matters Related There To.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion?
Mr. President, might I interject on this?
Yes.
This is a vacation of a public right-of-way involved in a development that we were working on, a amendment to a PUD. At this time, what I'm gonna suggest is that we do a motion to accompany or adopt this all-in-one reading, as this vacation of public right-of-way needs to be done as to get this project moving forward.
You want us to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion?
Mr. President, might I interject on this?
Yes.
This is a vacation of a public right-of-way involved in a development that we were working on, a amendment to a PUD. At this time, what I'm gonna suggest is that we do a motion to accompany or adopt this all-in-one reading, as this vacation of public right-of-way needs to be done as to get this project moving forward.
You want us to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Second reading ordinances. That concludes first reading. Second reading ordinance, Ordinance 18-29, An Ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, Fixing the Parks, None Reverting Program Fees for the Year 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, thank you, that we approve of second reading ordinance, 18-29. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-29? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we suspend the rules on Ordinance 18-33. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. On second reading ordinances. That concludes first reading. Second reading ordinance, Ordinance 18-29, An Ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, Fixing the Parks, None Reverting Program Fees for the Year 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, thank you, that we approve of second reading ordinance, 18-29. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment on Ordinance 18-29. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-29? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-30, An Ordinance to Establish New Wages and Salaries for Employees of Town of Maryville, Indiana, and to Add Men Provisions in the Compensation and Benefits Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-30 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment at this time. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-29? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-30, An Ordinance to Establish New Wages and Salaries for Employees of Town of Maryville, Indiana, and to Add Men Provisions in the Compensation and Benefits Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-30 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-31? Any public comment? Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 18-30, An Ordinance to Establish New Wages and Salaries for Employees of Town of Maryville, Indiana, and to Add Men Provisions in the Compensation and Benefits Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Ordinance 18-30 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-31? Any public comment? Roll call. Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Motion 6-0. Ordinance 18-33, An Ordinance Vacating a Public Way in the Town of Maryville, Lake
County, Indiana, in All Matters Related There To.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve Ordinance 18-30 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on Ordinance 18-31? Any public comment? Roll call. Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries 6-0. On ordinance eighteen dash thirty-one, any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span.
Aye.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries six to zero. Ordinance eighteen dash thirty-three, an ordinance vacating a public way in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, they approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-three on second reading, any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment at this time, any public comment on ordinance eighteen dash thirty-three? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span. Yes.
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 Yes, that concludes second reading ordinances, resolutions, a resolution of Town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, transfer of monies of the twenty eighteen budget within certain categories.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, they approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six to zero. Resolution eighteen dash thirty-two, resolution Town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, transfer of monies of the twenty eighteen budget within the general fund.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, they approve resolution eighteen dash thirty-two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six to zero. Resolution eighteen dash thirty-three, resolution of Town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the twenty eighteen budget within various funds.
No move.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, they approve resolution eighteen dash thirty-three. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six to zero. That concludes resolution B Z A action. Uh, case number Z four-one E twenty-one dash one-one-one-eight. Uh, the petitioner is Abad Mushlis, owner is G S M O L C owner, requests special exception approval, purpose is to allow a used car dealership, sixty-three hundred Broadway, it's in C-three Highway Commercial. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one-thirty-six to allow a used car dealership to be located at sixty-three hundred Broadway in a C-three Highway Commercial zoning district. This property was recently occupied by prop ambulance and was a car dealership, Paul Sir Poniek, before that. Petitioner is requesting approval for a used car dealership. The service department will be exclusively for cars that are sold through the dealership. Services will include minor brake repairs such as brakes, tires. There will be no transmission or major bodywork. The dealership will have approximately eighty cars outside and thirteen cars in the showroom. There will be a total of ten customer parking spaces, three of those will be handicapped. There will be a total of fifteen full-time employees. Employees will park in the rear of building too. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, nine a.m. to eight p.m., and closed on Sundays. The attorney has a copy of the lease. But conditions are for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. Um, the fire inspector should inspect the exhaust system within sixty days of this approval. The building will be totally painted, parking lot restriped, and lighting for the parking lot as soon as weather permit. Also per our ordinance, the security cameras on site.
Is the petitioner here? Good evening. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Roxanne, your ward.
No, I don't see any problem with it.
Anyone else?
You used those car dealership before?
Exactly, yes, I know. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries-
We need a motion.
Motion.
Ah! Okay, this is-
I like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarcus, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve case number Z four-one E two-one-one-one-eight. Any now questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Case number C four-two U V one-one dash one-one-one-eight. The petitioner is Rebecca Mendez, the owner is Rebecca Mendez, requests variance of use approval to allow a kennel at twenty-twenty-one West Seventy-third Avenue. It's currently zoned R-two residential. Are the petitioners here? Please call for it. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval to allow a kennel to be located at twenty-twenty-one West Seventy-third Avenue in a R-two residential zoning district. Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval to allow a kennel. In the Town of Maryville, kennels are allowed in A-one agricultural zoning district and M-one limited industrial district with a special exception approval. Petitioner would like to have approximately twenty-five dogs on the property. The property is zoned to have a limit of three dogs. The type of dog is the American bully breed. Despite their appearance, these animals are neither human nor dog aggressive. All the dogs are raised to be sociable with other dogs and children. They have undergone basic obedience training and crate training. When the dogs are let out to exercise, train, and play, petitioner is always careful to never let them leave unattended so that they don't leave the property. Petitioner plans to erect the privacy fence around the property. A system has been put in place to perform the daily basic duties to keep the animals clean. Waste management service has been hired to dispose of the waste properly. The dogs that are not able to reside twenty-four-seven in the house are provided with their own five-by-five heavy gauge steel kennel, pine and cedar for bedding in case of accidents. This bed is to keep them from sleeping on a cold surface. Dogs are kept in a garage with heated and air conditioning units for the animals. Fresh water and food is provided daily. Any breeding that takes place between the animals is of excellent quality. Research is done to ensure the breeding results in perfect family companions, sound structure, health, and mental capacity. Contractual precautions are taken to ensure that dogs go to good homes and don't end up in harm's way. Conditions are for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. The, uh, there are no more than twenty-five dogs, and a fence will be erected by May first, twenty nineteen, or as soon as weather permits.
Mr. President, I'd like to read something into the record for discussion and action. On November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the petitioner applicant owner filed a request for variance of use approval for the property located at twenty-twenty-one West Seventy-third Avenue, Maryville, Indiana, four-six-four oh one. Number one, and these are five criteria, ladies and gentlemen, that a variance has to meet by Indiana code. Number one, the proposed use will be injurious to the public health, safety morals, and general welfare of the community because the operation of the kennel containing between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs within this densely populated area by the petitioner applicant owner can allow for potential dogs to run loose, which could lead to dangerous situations for the residents located within that area. Noxious odors and smells emanating from the property containing between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs and an unsanitary condition on the property with, with the between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs being maintained in the house and structures on the same. Number two, the proposed variance of use will have substantially adverse effect on the use and the value of the properties adjacent to the property included in the proposed variance because the operation of a kennel containing between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs within the densely populated area by the petitioner applicant owner can allow for potential dogs to run loose, which could lead to dangerous situations for the residents located within that area. Noxious odors and smells emanating from the property containing between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs and an unsanitary condition on the property within the between twenty and twenty-five American bully breed dogs being maintained in the house and structures on the same. The need for proposed use variance has not arisen from some condition peculiar to the property. The petitioner owner applicant has not and continues to be unable to demonstrate the need for this variance as related to some conditions peculiar to the property. Number four, the strict application of the terms of the zoning ordinance will not constitute an unnecessary hardship if applied to the property for which the proposed variance is sought. The petitioner owner applicant has not and continues to be unable to demonstrate this necessary hardship. The proposed variance of use will substantially interfere with the comprehensive or master plan because we are placing a kennel in an existing R-two residential zoning district, which was not contemplated within this zoning district. Uh, in consideration of these five items, Mr. President, I make the motion that we not accept the favorable recommendation from the B Z A and deny the variance of use. And as a side note, um, it's been communicated to me that unfortunately Jeff is out on medical leave, but the councilman for the area is not in favor of this petition either.
I step in that motion.
Yes, I had a conversation with Councilman Minchuck around here today, um, or yesterday, I should say. Is there any other discussion? Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we deny the case number C four-two U V one-one dash one-one-one-eight. Any other discussion there? Let's take a roll call, Mr. Guerzi.
Span. Span. Uh... I don't know.
State, state. You'll state?
Yeah.
No.
You need, wait a second, Mr. Guerzi. The motion was to deny, so vote, you need to vote yes to deny, not no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, you, you second my motion, Margie.
Yes, I did.
Is that correct, Mr. Svetino?
Yes.
You're voting yes to, in agreement to deny it?
Yes, I do agree to deny it. It is a residential area, and I believe twenty-five dogs at one time is just too much.
In a residential area, my vote is to deny it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to deny, one abstention. Sorry, you, you guys were denied.
Okay, so then where's the discussion? I mean, I need time here.
How many dogs do you currently have?
I have twenty-three dogs in my home right now.
How many of them are breeders?
They're all valuable to me, and I need time to, I just started, I just got a, I just got a job, he's been working, I need time to be able to find some homes, I mean, put my house up for sale, I'm gonna need, I mean, this stuff takes, takes time, this is not something that can just happen overnight, I can't just give all my dogs away tomorrow. So I need some time and, I, I mean, thirty days, I mean, I, I need more than thirty, I need like six months, eight months, I need time to get rid of these dogs, I need time to-
Here's what we gonna give you, ma'am.
Put my house up for sale.
Excuse me, here's what we gonna give you. We're gonna give you ninety days.
And then what happens in ninety days when I haven't been able to sell my house or buy a new house yet? Or find temporary homes for these animals? I, I mean-
Here's what we gonna do.
What do I do in ninety days?
We're not, because we're gonna give you ninety days to dispense of the dogs, and then after that, you can take all the time you want to sell your house. But ninety days to get rid of the dogs.
I mean, do-
Hello? Hi, uh, I'm Justin Rutter, guys, I'm boyfriend of Rebecca Mendez. I, um, it's a little bit concerning to me that you guys are, I know that the property is zoned for residential. Um, however, you know, we have about an acre and a quarter of land on our property. Um, now, it's not a residential area that, that normal person would think of in a subdivision or something where we even have any sort of close vicinity to other neighbors. Uh, we only have one adjacent neighbor on one side of our property, and, um, surrounding the other, uh, sides of our property is all agricultural area as it is. Now-
Well, it's residential, but it's used right now for-
It's been used for agriculture.
Yeah.
Now-
For land farming.
We have the resources, uh, to be able to properly care for our dogs. It's not just about being a puppy mill, which I know that automatically a lot of people, they first hear the word breeder, and that's the first thing that they think. Now, the reason why we came to you guys is because we obviously want to do the right thing. Uh, we moved to Maryville in the hopes of being able to pursue our, you know, our dream of being able to, um, show and train these dogs who, in my opinion, I mean, they're the best family companion breed out there. I've been involved with this breed now for twelve years. I've actively shown in the U K C and the A B K C. Um, I mean, really, these dogs, we, they're more than just dogs to us.
What breed are you talking about?
American bully.
American bully.
That's a pit bull?
No.
American bully, can you describe to me what it looks like? I can't place this.
Well, they're-
A bulldog?
There's, they are related to the bulldog.
Okay.
Um, so they're bullier, they're stockier, there's three different variances according to height for the breed. Um, the breed was created about twenty-five years ago for the purpose of being a family companion. Um, and for about twenty years now, they've, we've had our registry, we've had the opportunity to show and campaign these dogs, and it really developed consistency with them, created song.
Question?
I will, oh, go ahead, Dan.
I guess I would say that.
Is that the dog that was in the little rascals with Spanky and-
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mr. President, um, I, I will tell you personally, folks, one reason I voted against it is the apartment's on the north side of Seventy-third Avenue. Mr. Minchuck's not here, I have to respect his wishes in Ward Three as he wouldn't in Ward Six. I will offer you this, that in my ward, in Ward Six, I have the eastern side of Maryville. I have what's known as the Panhandle. I would recommend, uh, talking to a realtor, I have a lot of agricultural property, chief of police lives out there on East Ninety-third Avenue, I know there's property out there for sale, you would be permitted in an A-one, and if you came to me with the plan, again, with acreage, I would probably support you if you got into the right zoning district and you were out east in, in eastern Maryville, okay?
And I'll tell you that I cannot vote for this because you are in residential, and, and I got that you got an acre, two acres, and it's a little bit different, your situation, but you're gonna have everybody in, that lives in this town, that we've already had how many people come before us wanting to open this type?
Is that a precedent?
And we denied them, so we have to deny you, you were in an R-one, and we- It should be every situation is different, it shouldn't be because some person, you know, they said no, she, this one said no, it's like everyone is different.
Here, here, no way, here, here.
Look, after the ninety days, if I can't sell my house in ninety days and purchase a new home in your land in ninety days, I, I mean, it's like-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, the town council has taken action.
Okay.
They've spoken. And denied.
The point is, it takes time.
And, and I understand, man, I'm not saying that you have to be out of your house in ninety days.
No, my dogs, which are there, like my children, they are my family, that's what people, you guys don't understand, is that they are my family. I moved here, I purchased this home with the intention of being able to have this, these dogs here, I did, I wasn't aware and I didn't know.
Well, I, I-
Okay, so it's just-
And Councilman Pettit has made an excellent suggestion, and, uh-
I will-
Yeah.
Our journey is-
We're willing to give you six, six months, but we're not gonna go nine, we're not gonna go a year. So let's record show that we're-
In six months, if, if, I'm just, I wanna try, I, I wanna try, but I uprooted my whole family from Illinois here, I don't live down the street, my family doesn't live down the street, I literally uprooted my children and my life over here, my kids are enrolled in Maryville, it's not just, you know, uh, up in, you know, I mean-
I understand, man.
It takes time.
When you were uprooting your family to come here, did you look into the law?
You know what, I trusted my realtor, I'm, I'm young, I'm my first home, I didn't know what I was doing, I purchased this home, I truly trusted her. I didn't know that that was something that I even had to look into, in all honesty, I thought I was buying a house with a barn, with land, and it was okay, that's not what I'm used to where I know.
Now, at this point, you have twenty-three dogs, you said?
Yes.
Are they all registered in the Town of Maryville?
They're not, but they are all up to date on rabies, shots, and everything.
They're not registered, that's a lot, right there.
Okay, we're, uh, six months, ma'am, we'll see you in six months. That concludes B Z A action. Uh, old business, any old business? Any new business? Public comment, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Tashawn Brown, I'm at five-six-eight-eight Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. Um, I'm just here basically just to, um, let the council and everyone be aware what I, um, recently experienced with our, um, local-
Can you speak up, speak into the mic?
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, do my name and everything over? Okay, I'm Tashawn Brown, I'm at five-six-eight-eight Connecticut Street, and of course, it's in Maryville, Indiana. I'm here to basically just let the, um, everyone be aware of, um, what I recently had to experience, unfortunately. Um, back in August, um, there was a one for my arrest. Um, I ain't trying to talk about this, but there was a one for my arrest. Um, I respect protocol, I respect the things you have to do to get the person arrested so they could be in custody to go through what they have to go through. However, the way I was, um, approached was extremely, extremely, um, forceful, it was scary, it was terrifying, I wouldn't wish this on my worst enemy. Um, the warrant ended up being resolved on a Wednesday. I was harassed even before the warrant was even active. I found out that there was a false complaint placed on my home, I don't know who it was from, I hear it was from, uh, one of the police officers, but I'm not gonna say any names, that there was gunshots and, um, drug activity in my home. I've been in Maryville since two thousand and two, graduated from Maryville High School, um, raised my siblings, um, there, because our mom passed eight years ago, raised all four of my brothers and sisters, they graduated from the school. Um, never been in any situation, no gun violence, no drug activity, and up until this day, that was my first time ever being in trouble and encountering with the law, first time. So the Wednesday, the warrant was recalled, um, because I went to court to do what I'm supposed to do. Um, that same day, when the warrant, after the warrant was recalled, I was harassed even more. They came to my home so forceful, I have a two-year-old son in there, he's crying, they banged on every single door and window of my home. You would've thought I murdered someone or committed armed robbery, whatever the case may be, I don't know what they thought, but it was just too excessive, too much for us. Um, I end up called, make a long story short, I called the Hammond Court on Russell Street. Um, I spoke to a young lady by the name of Maria, she was on the phone, she cleared that-
Excuse me, Ms. Brown, your three minutes are up.
Okay, well, can I just, basically just sum this up real, real quick?
We'll give you three minutes, that's it.
Okay, can I get three more minutes, if nobody else here?
No, you, all we give is three minutes.
Okay, well, can I basically just say, um-
You may have them, your, your public comment is done.
Okay, so how you guys gonna address that? Um, how would you, how you guys gonna address this concern with the public safety of our community? And being that, um, Maryville is more diverse, uh, we don't have, we have two-
That's it, you're done, have a nice day.
So I can't say anything else?
You're done.
Okay, so can I ask a question, how you guys?
Public comment is closed.
You're done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements, uh, town hall offices will be closed with the exception of emergency services December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, in observance of Christmas and Christmas Eve. Everybody got this flyer for Kim, Kim Bro Bar presents Santa gets sued next Tuesday night, four to six p.m. uh, here in the Maryville Town Court. I encourage everyone that can to come out, it's a great time, uh, where the kids get a chance to sue Santa for not bringing them gifts. Next town council meeting-
Wow.
Is Tues, is Thursday, December the twenty-seventh, that's Thursday, December the twenty-seventh, at twelve noon.
Motion to adjourn.